Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I can take this opportunity to thank everybody coming here. Just a few simple items I'd ask you to adhere to. When it comes time for the public comment, we would like to stay within 15 minutes on one subject. And each one of the speakers, I'd ask you to stay to three minutes. I will remind you that we do have two public comment sessions, so if you have, as we have right now, organs that would like to speak, then we can stretch it out between one to the other one. Same number go to the appointments. We don't have any appointments for tonight, so we'll go to the budgets with the overall presentation and turn it over to John.
Thank you all, and welcome. How do we pay for local government services that we desire? Obviously, property taxes are the ones everyone is most familiar with, and that is the primary revenue that is used in order to take care of property needs. Another large item is vehicle registration, and in good times, those go up. People buy newer cars, the tax is higher on a newer car, they have recreational vehicles and others. There are fees for service, whether it's building inspection fees or sale of trash bags or ambulance fees or other fees that we have for service. There is some state and federal aid. We receive several hundred thousand dollars of state aid every year that's undesigned it. We receive $270,000 for highway aid, and we also receive bridge aid, and we'll be looking at actually three bridge aid projects that we have going on. Last year, we had a FEMA mitigation, hazard mitigation grant. And then the other is miscellaneous. There are a lot of other little sources that add up to pay for local government services. The municipal tax rate, this is what has been for the last seven years. So it's gone from 441 to today, it's 423. There was actually an assessment adjustment in 2017, so while it appeared to drop 8.2 percent, the assessment went up 8.4 percent. So basically, there's been a slow increase over the last seven years, but we're within a fraction of a percent for a year in terms of the change in the tax rate. Measures of financial stability, obviously, a stable tax rate is one measure of stability, and we've been working very hard on the municipal side. You may say, "Yeah, but my tax bill went up." Well, we do not control what's going on with the school, with the county, or with the state school tax. The majority of the increase that you've seen over the last several years has not been because of the municipality, so a stable tax rate. The second major measure of financial stability for a community is fund balance. Fund balance is required by the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration, and fund balance basically is a savings account. It serves two very important functions. One is with cash flow. Peter Royce, a few years back, did an excellent presentation on what happens if we're delayed one month or two months in collecting taxes because of the state being late in setting the rate. Incidentally, we have the rate this year the earliest I've ever had it. We do know what the tax rate is for 2018. It also is used in case of emergencies. When there was flooding at the Old Town Hall and repairs had to be made, there was no appropriation. If you have fund balance, you can go to the Department of Revenue Administration and receive permission to use fund balance for emergencies. Fund balance consists of, you start with what your fund balance was the prior year. You add unexpended appropriations at year end. Most appropriations expire at the end of the year, and if you've spent less than was appropriated, which has been our situation every year that I've been here, that money is part of what goes into fund balance. You also have revenue in excess of projection. We project our revenue conservatively, and every year for the last seven years, revenue has come in greater than what the projection was that we used for setting the tax rate. Unused overlay, you set money aside for refunds, for abatements, for various purposes that relate to assessing, and any of that that's not used in any given year goes into the fund balance. And then there are audit adjustments. When I arrived, there had not been a CPA complete audit on the books. We worked to correct that rather quickly, and we've been working to straighten out all the beginning balances, so there have been some audit adjustments over the years that have been made. The fund balance, in this seven-year period from 2012 to 2018, increased $1,913,000. So we're much more stable than we were seven years ago. At the same time, from fund balance that came in greater than our target rate, we've used $3,240,168 on capital items, primarily capital reserves, some on paving and other projects, all capital projects. So there's about $5 million there of fund balance that we obtained over the last seven years. Here is a record of what the fund balance has been for the last seven years, as well as what was used through warrant articles each year. And the amount used in warrant articles varies depending upon what the prior year's increase in fund balance was. The target is to use the increase in the prior year's fund balance as the amount that would be used for capital items each year. So let's look at the operating budget. Now, this is not including the warrant articles, and we'll be getting to the warrant articles in a little bit. But as far as the operating budget, the approved budget for 2018 was $7,52,228. The proposed budget for 2019 is $7,167,247. That's a difference, a request for an increase of $115,019, which is a difference of 1.63 percent. Now, the difference in the budget is not what the impact would be on the tax rate, and I can explain in detail if somebody is interested in that. Note that the collective bargaining agreement is included in the approved prior year's budget or current year's budget by DRA, and therefore, it is included. So if you looked at the operating warrant article last year, it would be the difference of the collective bargaining agreement in this number, but this is the number that we use when we're comparing. Now, there is one audit about 2018, and that is there was almost $240,000 bond repayment that was in 2018. So if you subtract that bond payment, the apparent difference would be $355,017 or a 5.3 percent. But again, that's not what the impact on taxes would be. The change in the tax rate would be approximately 11 and 1/2 cents per $1,000 of property evaluation. So 11 and 1/2 cents would be a total tax bill increase of $34 on a $300,000 property. That represents a 2.7 percent increase in the rate, which coincidentally is exactly what the New England Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers was from August 2017 to August 2018. So we are basically asking for a budget that's increased by the rate of inflation as far as the impact on the tax rate goes with what is being presented here. Now, there are those who want to get to a zero tax rate impact. To do that, you would cut $115,019 from the operating budget, and then you would have no impact on the tax rate. Or you could increase revenue by $115,019 from other non-property tax sources. Some general information, the Board of Selectmen approved a 1% cost of living for budgeting purposes plus a step, and they also put a new top step on the scale. The scale was such that there were people that were staying at the top of the scale for any number of years without an increase, and the Board approved a new top step. That new top step was split into two parts, half of it taking effect in April and the other half taking effect in the fall of 2019. One of the other changes is succession management. I am retiring next year. The Board has hired an intern. We're looking at that position becoming a deputy town administrator, and then when I retire, that position becoming the town administrator. There is money in there. The fire department continues to make personnel adjustments, and you will find that this is a problem statewide as it gets harder and harder to get call firefighters out for emergencies at certain times of the day. More and more departments are moving towards either part-time or full-time staff. This is not for full-time staff. This is for increasing, making some changes as far as the call department and the part-timers go, so that change will be occurring. I broke out those operating lines that increased over 10,000. Now, I didn't include personnel lines that were regular personnel, a department with 15 employees, and as a 2% increase in pay, that would be more than 10. But I didn't include either benefit changes or the salary changes in this list. This list is just to point out the big items. One of the big items is the public safety building, the air handling units, the air conditioning units. They are 15 years old, actually closer to 18 years old now, and they need to be replaced. That was put in the operating budget. The Board may want to consider that as a warrant article or may want to do something different with that. It is a maintenance item of simply repairing and replacing them. The succession plan that we've got in place is going to add $59,000 to the operating budget. It's going to cost you more to go to a full-time town administrator. I have been part-time, and I have not been receiving benefits because I am retired with benefits, but when you go to replace me, you will be paying for a full-time person with benefits, so that's going to be more expensive. The transfer station disposal costs are going up. We're in a nine-year contract, which we just started, but there have been changes primarily caused by China. If you want to bash China tonight, they've stopped taking all the recycling that they used to be taking, and that's dropped the value of that market, which has then increased the cost of handling recyclables and what can be done with them. The fire staff changes are about $50,000, the ones I mentioned earlier. Last year, we did not have to buy a new police cruiser because of being able to obtain a good used one, but a new police cruiser is in the budget. We should be replacing at least one cruiser every year based on the mileage we put on it. You're actually going to have to replace two cruises on an occasional basis, but at least one every year. I have budgeted in here for a highway foreman for part of the year. We have been talking about how to restructure the Public Works Department to help it function better, especially if Peter's on vacation or Peter is away, so we have put in a foreman's position. The transfer station needs work in the paving area, in the building maintenance. In highway, you see a $20,000 line, and the town is in the process of changing from our 2010 office licenses to Office 365. It's a more secure system. It's a cloud-based system, but it is going to cost us more on an annual basis, so that's an $18,000 contract expenditure. There have been lines that decreased. I've already talked about the bond repayment of almost $240,000 decreased. Police prosecution, we put this in, but we found ways of working out arrangements so that we are not going to have to budget it for next year. It doesn't mean it won't have to happen in following years, but the Stratford County does our prosecution for us, and they do a good job of coordinating. The county attorney likes it because it's easier if you're moving from a local case and they need to move it to a felony or misdemeanor, or the county attorney has to get involved. There's less elections next year, so there's a $10,000 cut there. Items that still need to be adjusted, after we put this together and I put it out, I found out there was a $5,000 error on the assessing. Next year is a recertification year, so it should be $45,000 and $54,000 in the two lines instead of what is in there of $35,000 and $59,000. So at some point, I'm going to ask that we correct those two lines. A big item I'm going to spend some time on this evening is the police station. A year ago, just under a year ago, there was a presentation on the risk involved with the current police station, the shortcomings, the financial and liability risk to the town, the risk to staff, and how that has to be addressed. Some departments have already come to me with small line adjustments they want to make, and when they do their budget presentations, they'll be bringing those up. The tech committee last week recommended that as far as that digitization of old records, we prioritize going to a scanner plotter that would do the de-size large plots and plans to get them into electronic storage. These are the large flat files, which we have so many of, and they take a lot of floor space, and the documents are starting to wear out. It's so much easier to deal with electronic documents than it is with the paper documents. That is not in the budget. It's a little under $10,000. It's the hope of the tech committee and myself that we will be able to find funds before the end of this calendar year to buy that scanner plotter out of the 2018 budget, but if we can't, that's going to have to go into the 2019 budget in order to accomplish that. And then there's a mistake, there's a $5,000 warrant article for winter maintenance that should have been zero. It was not zeroed out, so actually, one in five balance each other out, and the rest of them we'll look at in more detail. When I mentioned that we're going to do a property update, the state requires every five years, we bring the values up to a range of 95 to 105 percent of market value. Over the last several years, your properties have gone up in value, and as a result, our assessments have become dated, and they need to be readjusted. So almost everybody is going to see an increase in their assessment based upon the increase in their property value, but don't immediately jump to the conclusion that means an increase in your tax bill. The tax bill is a factor of rate times your assessment, and when the assessment goes up, it's like a seesaw, the rate comes down, so that the two, when multiplied by each other, should be revenue neutral, and that is that the numbers that I have been using when I've been talking about the tax rate, the impact on tax rate, and what needs to be done in order to come to a zero tax impact if you want. The impact of an update on the valuation varies by property. As always, some go up more than average, and those who are fortunate enough to have homes that go up much faster than average are usually the ones who complain the most because, of course, their tax bill has gone up much more than average. And those who have gone down see a cut in their taxes, and they celebrate without realizing they've lost equity because the value of their home did not go up as much as others in town. So there will be a revow in 2019. It should not have an impact on what we're doing for budgets or for taxes, but I want you to be aware of it, and we'll keep you informed as we proceed. Major item not included, I want to talk about the police station for a little bit. This is a critical need in several areas. I'm going to go over some of the slides that you saw last year that pointed out by the two police officers that were doing the presentation on what some of the major problems at the existing station are. We have just received a report from the fire protection engineer that even if what we do is a small renovation, there's a sprinkler that's going to be required, and the rough estimate on that is $100,000. That is not in the budget at this point because there are other options that we need to look at. One option would be a warrant article to sprinkle the public safety building and do that smaller renovation. I say small renovation, something in the $50,000 range. The second would be to bond the police station sprinkler system and a building expansion. We had an estimate that we could expand the building adding 20 feet, give or take, towards Kate Road and solve our space needs and our other safety needs there for about $1 million. That did not include the sprinkler, so we may need to put a bond in for the building expansion at the current location of the public safety building. The third option that has been considered and will need to be looked at by the Board is a brand-new police station. That is probably $1,500,000 and 1/2, but then you would have the space that currently is occupied by the police department available for future fire department expansion as the fire department continues to grow for the safety needs. This is the slide, the risk regulatory and compliance issues. They used a lean process as they developed this, and I'm not going to try to read all the little print that's on there, but basically, gender separation. We now have three women officers, and we do not have a women's locker room or a woman's bathroom. That is an issue that needs to be addressed. Weapon control, our current method of securing weapons when they're in the station is inadequate and needs to be updated. Public and prisoner separation right now, that is not the way it should be for adults and especially for juveniles. Juvenile law is even stricter. There's too many points of access, and it needs to change how you handle prisoners. The facility security is an issue. You have an undersized and unsafe lobby area. You're unable to secure some of the things inside. For example, when we're doing the computer stuff, they took one look at the way in which we have our server, and they said that doesn't meet any kind of CEGIS compliance, which is the federal government's requirement for security of the data that we handle for criminal records, because it's not in a locker room, for one thing. Record security is an issue. It could affect our ability to prosecute a case for, it needs to be changed. I mentioned juveniles earlier. The law is that juveniles have to have sight and sound separation from adult detainees. That means you cannot have, if you bring in a juvenile and you bring in an adult, they have to be in separate rooms, and we do not have that capacity right now, which creates a problem. It may mean somebody has to drive to Dover with a person just to have them separated there, so that is an issue. Again, weapons control, I mentioned earlier, record security. And the state of New Hampshire requires our police officers to regularly be recertified for fitness in terms of running and other physical activities. They need to have opportunities to keep their wellness and training up to the state requirement if they're going to retain their certification. So those are some of the areas, the critical needs. Sprinkler, even though it's a small space, and that is something the Board of Selectmen is going to have to talk about. I know the police station, when that presentation was made last year, jumped to the top of the list because of some other options and opportunities that came along. It did not end up on the warrant for the town meeting, but we need to do something about the police station, so that is a major item that's not included in the current budget or that's included in the warrant articles. So again, the approved rate, the proposed rate, the impact on taxes of 11 and 1/2 cents or $34 on a $300,000 property. Now, there are two bond articles that are being proposed in this budget that's being presented. I'm sure you're all waiting to see what those two are. And I know many of you are here because you are interested in the library, and just recently, an opportunity arose that the Selectmen are considering and talking about that relates to the town hall, so for the sake of transparency, both of those are in here. It's up to the Board to decide how they're going to proceed going forward. The advantage of bonding right now, there's a small impact on the 2019 tax rate, but it's a lasting commitment. One of the reasons the school has seen higher tax rates is they've been paying off a bond on the middle school. But the good news is that bond is almost paid off, and when that's paid off, if you slid in the payments for town bonds, while you might not see a decrease in your taxes, it wouldn't be a sudden jump. It would have to be displayed on the warrant articles as an impact on the taxes, but it could offset it with the middle school. Bond interest rates are rising. When we came forward a couple of years ago with the town hall, we were looking at a rate almost a percent lower than what you're looking at right now, and I think if we wait much longer, we'll see it a percent higher in the future as far as bond interest rate for municipal bonds. The Fed seems intent on raising the rate again come December. So the town hall bond for $2 million. The town has been offered five acres of good buildable land, provided the town builds in the near future. The person is interested in developing the site for commercial. The town hall is a good anchor, as if you would have it, as a way of helping provide an opportunity for other people to come along and develop on that commercial property on Route 125. We've done an analysis. We feel the offer is worth around $125,000 to the town. There would be room for additional buildings and expansion. One of the things that we will have to look at is would we want to try to build a combined police station-town hall or a police station there on that site. It's located on Route 125, just north of where the current rented space is that we're It's easy access for residents, obviously. 125 is the main transportation corridor. It's close to the existing town hall and close to, our record storage is in one of the storage units across the street, so it's close to that as well. We would hope to be able to consolidate all our records into one building. Five acres would have a setback, a long driveway, so that it would set well into the area there along 125, and it would be ADA compliant, new construction. It would allow for meeting space. Right now, we're meeting here because we have no meeting space in the current town hall beyond using a break room area. Record storage, we're renting places to store our records, and parking, all lacking at the current rented space. It would help to centralize economic development on Route 125, as this is part of a 212-acre development, so it would be part of a much larger development, and it would help to be an anchor for economic development. It would help to expand the tax base as it encourages other commercial development. It's within a mile of what we call the town center. It would generate taxes on all of the rest of the land, the value of the taxes would go up. If the town stopped renting the property we use, then it would become taxable again. The taxes on that would be something like $13,000, $14,000 a year that the town would receive instead of having the town have to pay as part of the rent that they have on the building. Right now, we're spending $64,000 a year in rent, and it's like taking your money and throwing it out your window. You have nothing left at the end of the year beyond having had the use of the space, whereas if you invest in a property, that property should last 50 years, and certainly, you would have a good return on investment that way. The other project which is on the warrant or on the consideration in the budget with the warrant articles is a library. This building is about three times the size of the current library. The current library, as you know, is quite small and cramped. There would be a large community meeting room, and the location would be at the site of the former town hall near the current library. This is a detail, the footprint obviously could change. If we build the town hall on 125, it would not be this schematic that is down here, although this space would remain as a future building pad is a possibility if the town hall goes elsewhere, that being Ramsdale and down at the bottom being Route 9. So, small impact in 2019, but a lasting commitment for 15 or 20 years for consideration on the bond articles. Now, let's look at the rest of the warrant articles. The regularly recurring warrant articles on the capital projects. The town traditionally uses fund balance. As I said, we target the increase in fund balance from the prior year as the amount that we plan to use in the upcoming year on warrant articles. And you see how successful that strategy has been for the last seven years. We've not only built up our fund balance, we've also been able to invest over $3 million in capital projects. As I mentioned, fund balance is a result of unexpended appropriation, revenue overlay, and audit adjustment, and it's a savings account to help. It's required by DRA, and it's for good management. So $100,000 is being proposed again this year for the road paving and maintenance. There is $600,000 in the operating budget. That would be a $700,000 commitment to road paving. This is in keeping with what we've done each of the last several years. Roads are like any piece of equipment. They wear out, they need to be repaired, and the tax impact if you did not use fund balance is 10 cents. Highway heavy equipment, large trucks are past their projected life. The Grader, at 29 years old, actually isn't past its life, but it's within three years of the end of life that's anticipated when the CIP presentation comes up a little later. Marsh is going to share a grand op- Masha is going to share a grant opportunity that we may want to use as far as the grader goes. But the tax impact on the $60,000 would be 6 cents if you don't use fund balance. Library technology, this is funding for computers, software in the library. This one has been on every one of the last seven years and been approved. Fire communication, we're going to have to do a major upgrade to our radios and our radio system as it relates to fire in the near future. It looks like it could cost as much as $250,000. We need to start putting more money aside for this fire communication capital reserve project. Fire truck, we actually have saved money, which would help us buy the first one, but there's a second one that's only six years down the road and that one's a half a million-dollar project. So we need to keep putting money aside to plan for the replacement of the fire trucks as they reach their end of expected life. And then we have a fire equipment capital reserve for $10,000 that's used for hoses, thermal cameras. It was used as a match for a grant, AIPAC grant, so that the fire department received like $100,000 in grant money because we had some money there that we could put up to match. We had to put up, I think it was $10,000 or $15,000 to match the $100,000, so we were able to get new AIPACs. It's critical if a firefighter is going into a smoky environment that they have an AIPAC that's working, that's up to date. And having this capital reserve gives us the flexibility. Rick does a great job of going after grants and getting grants to do those kinds of projects. We put the money that is -- comes from the sale of graves regularly back into the capital reserve. Technically, it comes out of fund balance. This past year, we only sold $1,000 worth of graves, so that is the proposal for what to go -- goes into that fund, and that's for future expansion of the cemetery. Bridge culvert, capital reserve at $75,000. The good news on this is this can be used as a 20% match against the state's 80%. The state will pay 80% for bridge replacement. This year, at town meeting, the town approved Malago Road Bridge. And as was indicated in the warrant article, 80% of that is from state funding. Green Hill is currently being designed and engineered for replacement. We are on the list, so we're putting money aside to be our match for a bridge that will cost between $2.5 and $3 million. Old Settlers is -- only serves eight houses, but if the culvert bridge that is there goes, there's no way for them to get there. It's a Class 6 road in from Stratford on the other end, so that one needs to be done. The state has recently added that to the list. That means it's quite a few years out, but at least if we have it on the list and something catastrophic happens, we have a hope of getting some money from the state. So we need to put money into the bridge capital reserve fund in order to be prepared to meet the state's match of 80%. And that presents -- that completes what I had to say about the budget. I think Masha is going to come up and continue to talk about the CIP project, capital improvements.
Senator, thank you very much for doing that. Masha, whenever you're ready, please.
So the planning board has been working on a capital improvements program. We've solicited projects from the department heads. We looked at the relevance to the master plan and we have kind of some projections. And this is just a plan. There's no expenditure of money involved in a town when you adopt a capital improvements So let's define what a capital improvements program is. A capital improvements project would be outside your normal operations and maintenance. So it's going to be your larger items. In the town of Barrington, we look at a gross cost of at least $10,000 and a useful life of at least 10 years. It's not an annual budget item or it requires bond funding, so we're talking about your larger items. The purpose of the CIP is to anticipate major projects and to coordinate the scheduling of public capital expenditures and to plan for large capital expenditures, large-scale capital expenditures. And this is so we can spread the cost over a period of years. We look at it in three different ways. We look at the short term, which is for the next six years, and tonight I'm going to show you basically three years out. We look at the midterm, so seven to 10 years, and then the long term, 11 to 20, to give us a snapshot of what we're going to have to face in the future and the reasons to prepare a CIP. Preserving public health, safety, it's about planning for road upgrades, it's addressing changes in our census and growing community and making sure we're aware to adapt to those changes. We have to anticipate the demands of growth. Town of Barrington has grown considerably over the last 30 years population-wise, and with that comes extra requirements. It also improves communication and coordination. The department heads got together a few weeks ago and reviewed prior submissions of projects, and it got a chance for them all to talk about what each department felt was going to be coming up in the near future and to get a good overall view of what was going on in the community. It's about avoiding tax rate spikes. Mr. Scruton touched upon that. It's about keeping a stable tax rate and not having it jump $2 a year and then go back down again. Kind of keeping it, most families can adjust well to even tax rate. And it's about providing for free distribution of capital assets, that we're addressing the broad needs of the community and not just a single in a single area. And it's about building a foundation for growth management and impact fees. Back a few years ago, the town had done a study back in, I want to say, '04, and at that point, the town was growing rather rapidly and was -- they were concerned about having room for schoolchildren and instituted an impact fee. And they -- and people building new houses, developers building new houses, have been paying an impact fee since that day. Ironically, our school population hasn't increased since then, but the school's plenty big enough to handle any -- the middle school's plenty big enough to handle any future growth that may occur. And it's about identifying scattered and premature development. And this is important for the planning board. If a project comes in and the road going to it, an example would be out on Oak Hill Road, when that developer came in, he had to upgrade the road. So if it -- they would not let them develop it without those upgrades because that would have been considered scattered and premature because the road in place would not have been able to handle it. Another recent example was probably five years ago, we had a gravel pit that was approved. It never went into operation, but one of the conditions was, we looked at the CIP and the plan for any improvements to Green Hill Road, and we said, "Yep, we're going to shim and overlay that." We don't have plans for any major upgrades to that road. And that would -- so any improvements to that road which were going to be needed fell on the hands of the developer. So that's one of the reasons we have a CIP. And it supports economic development. Having a strong infrastructure, infrastructure in good shape and facilities that would attract families to a community, also attract businesses because they want nice places for their employees to live and work. So I wanted to touch a little bit on 2018. There's a few projects that are still remaining that may get taken care of by the end of the year, but I just wanted to highlight them. One of them is the replacement of a 2003 International Dump Truck that's been on the select board's agenda with an approximate value of $160,000. The town is in receipt of $55,000 of state aid that they can use towards the dump truck replacement. Also, there are a couple items on the recreation department CIP that they had proposed years ago. One of them was to replace security system keypads and gym doors and locks for $10,000. And also for the recreation department, a resurfacing of the gym floor, which has not been done in a number of years and really needs regular maintenance. I'm not sure where the recreation department stands on that, but those were projects that had been projected for 2018 and have not been completed yet. If they don't, we can move them on to 2019. So Mr. Scruton mentioned the grader. Grader is approximately $300,000. The current grader owned by the town of Barrington is a 1985 grader. It was purchased used when it was 10 years old and at that time was given a 25-year life, so a 35-year life altogether. We have a possibility the selectmen can talk about of applying for grant funding through the Clean Diesel Program, which would give a 25 -- it's a 75-25, so they would pay 25%, which is about $75,000. There are some requirements. It has to run a minimal, a certain amount of hours minimum. I believe that our grader would qualify. And the thing is, it can't get within three years of when you're going to replace it. And currently, our grader just outside that three-year span. And based -- and it may need a waiver from the state also, I'm not sure. I just look at that as a way of possibly getting $75,000 towards it because it's a very old piece of equipment, but that's -- I wanted to bring that up. So 2019, Mr. Scruton already mentioned the town hall. Also, the conservation commission had asked for $200,000. I did put it in here just to bring it up. I wouldn't anticipate that would be bonding. And we spoke to them about possibly looking at more project specifics. And they weren't talking so much about land acquisition, but maybe parking lot construction and amenities to go with some of the conservation lands that they already have control of. And the -- another initiative, this was from the planning board, a suggestion from the planning board, was a solar initiative of $50,000. And I think what they would really like to see is, is we consider these new buildings as to possibly looking at using solar on some of them. And that's why they put that in there. They thought it was important to consider some green utilities. Another project, 2009 from the public works department, we spoke about the 2003 International, but we also have a 2004, and that's due, actually has due to be replaced. We usually like to have them replaced every 10 years, their frontline equipment, and this one, as you can see, is beyond the 10-year replacement. Also, our library project, which many of you are here for, so that's clearly on the 2019 project list. So you can see on the far right, the current crowded stacks. There's a layout, I had to kind of copy and paste this from the website and a view of a 3D model. So Mr. Scruton mentioned the replacement of Malago Bridge. That was a warrant article for a million-two. We did include it on here, even though it was approved last year, just in case the bids come back and there's any additional funding that may be needed for it. This is going to have $960,000 from the state bridge aid fund and a $240,000 balance, which the town will be responsible for. And it looks like we're trying to use a fund balance for that. So we mentioned the police renovation, or build new space for the police department of a million dollars. Also, now we're into 2020, once again, back into our equipment replacement. This is a 2007 International Dump Truck in need of replacement, and it's actually a little bit past the scheduled replacement time, and this one is actually, I understand, a little bit rougher shape than the '04. Fire department, in 2020, they need to replace the exhaust venting system, which is different than the air exchange. This is basically to suck the fumes from the trucks from the building. My understanding is there should be a $100,000 grant available and then $10,000 from general revenue. And in 2020, we will need to replace the 1995 International Tanker, otherwise known as T4, and this would come from capital reserves, which Mr. Scruton talked about earlier, and figure about a $300,000 purchase. Also, 2020, the fire communication system, they need to replace 40 of the digital, which is the bottom picture, and eight mobile radios and the related equipment. We're hoping to get that from the capital reserve account, and that's about $160,000 In 2020, the planning board suggested two items, along with town center and the development that will start soon in that area. The planning board would like the town to consider allocating money towards upgrading the parking lot, the intersection, basically what we call placemaking. Welcome to Barrington, you've arrived at Barrington. Now, I'm driving through. So giving a sense of arriving and some beautification that could occur, maybe some landscaping, pocket parks, some type of to really kind of dress up the 9125 intersection area. The recreation department is interested in acquiring land for a new park or waterfront, and they put a value on that at $750,000. I've taken these from their past submittals. I know they've gone through a strategic plan. We haven't seen the results of that yet, so I -- this is kind of old information, but we didn't want to leave it out. We wanted to include this information, thinking some of those projects probably haven't changed as much, that there's still ideas that townspeople are interested in. In 2021, the code enforcement vehicle will be scheduled to be replaced. It's again, I think, on one of those tiny 10-year replacement schedules at a value of about $30,000. The public works department has been renting a rubber tire excavator. They do a lot of their work along the side of the road with it. It doesn't cause the kind of damage that some of the ones with the tracks do, and that is a class 2.50. The other item, we've heard talked about a number of times at the select board meeting, it's been in the CIP, I think, for over 20 years. It's been in the master plan, and that's creating connectivity and upgrading some of our Class 6 roads to Class 5 roads, which means they would be maintained by the town. And the function of that is to allow townspeople to connect without having to go out onto 9 and 125 and to tie the town together for a lot of safety reasons. It can cut down on response time. So if anyone lived out on Young Road, that was a seven-mile detour when Young Road was down, and my understanding was Swain Road could have helped with some of the rerouting of traffic. The other item, 2020 recreation, 2021, recreation department would be looking to reconstruct the library space from the -- once the library vacates it, so that they can have room, more space and have control of the whole building. These pictures again show the stacks and also some of the combination, you know, kitchen, computer right next to the sink over here that the recreation department has in their office. So by year, and this is not necessarily including any of the grants or other funding, there's about $200,000 left in projects from 2018. We have in 2019, the big year, town hall, possible conservation funding, the 2004 dump, the Malago Bridge, which like has already been approved for funding, the library, possible solar initiative to be combined with one of the new buildings, and renovation of the police, and that would be a total of $9,749,000. And in 2020, the 2007 dump, the exhaust venting system, the T4 tanker, the mobile radios, the placemaking, and the land acquisition from the recreation department. Notice I'm not talking about where the money's coming from. There are different sources. There are different sources for a million-five-ten. And in 2021, we have code enforcement, replacement vehicle, rubber tire excavator, the swinging road, and the library space reconstruction for a million-seventy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marshall. Appreciate it. Would you like to move on now to opening of the truck beds, please? I have a PIB for me from Freightliner, Michael Larson, sales representative of Freightliner We have his proposal for a six-wheel dump with equipment. Total bid is $87,294. I'll repeat that again, $87,294. That is for the six-wheel dump truck with equipment.
No, I've been caving jazzy.
I'm sorry. I'm reading top line here, and that's what it says in the top line, please. It says right here, "Six-wheel dump truck with equipment."
With the equipment.
What's the weight of the truck? Is it heavy duty, is it light duty?
That's why we're going to give him to Peter to review.
I have, I was going to say.
My suggestion is we open, read the numbers, and then hand it to Peter to review and get back to the board.
The total for the six-wheel dump truck with equipment and everything else comes to $158,839. The equipment cost is $71,545. And that's for the HP Fairfield. And I have another one for a list of equipment, $134,133, which is $46,839 for equipment listed, from the hitch to the wing light. I have another one for Donovan equipment. Donovan equipment comes in at $64,450. Total price for, the cost for one complete unit is $151,744. If you need to get a list of the equipment or anything else on here, please see the clerk in the office, see Suzanne in the office, our administrator, she will be more than happy to give you a copy of it. The next item is for the Viking Sives, C-I-V-E-S, Sives, thank you. Total for equipment cost is $56,950, and the cost for one unit is $144,244. That is for a six-wheel dump truck with equipment for the Viking Sives. I have the specifications list here. I have two packets for specification proposals, and I also have one for extended coverage operation, which comes with this bid also. Need the envelope, please? Thank you. Next one is from Viking Sives, 255 Lisbon Road in Lewiston. This here is for a six-wheel dump truck with the equipment, request of a bid proposal over on page five of eight. Total cost for equipment on this one here is $56,950. This one here is a list of equipment minus the plow, wing, sand attachments, and from attachment C is $37,760. And I have a list of equipment, a list of the equipment for $56,950. This here is the equipment for custom, uh, excuse me. Oh, this is the list of equipment. And there's several cut sheets, which are information sheets on each project to go with it, so. Thank you, Suzanne. I don't think I'm missing any figures. It doesn't seem, yeah, it doesn't seem that the price is fair.
Looks like it combines up to about $101,000.
Third bid is submitted by Liberty International Trucks of New Hampshire, there it is, thank International HP Fairfield truck. They have made changes to the cab and chassis. They have made changes to the left and right-hand right-finish convex mirrors. They have made changes again on page two. Cab and chassis lump sum cost is $86,920. And the list of equipment from attachment D comes to $158,465. That's $158,465. And this one here is a sales quote for a front hitch, it's a gross weight of $33,000 to $60,000 gross weight of the truck. The amount is $71,545. And then for the attachments with equipment on that, it's an additional $46,839, our total of $133,759.
What was that?
Did you see the price again?
No.
The price for a, another truck is, a gross weight truck is $46,839. I'll say that again. It's for a gross weight truck of $33,000 to $60,000, and it's $46,839. And there is a list on that page. And then there's a cut sheet with it that has the detail of what's going with the vehicle. This is an international Donovan. There are notes in the comment section where he's not going to provide what was requested. Determination will have to be made by Peter. It's not just in one spot, but it's in numerous. Cab chassis lump sum cost for, under attachment A, for a six-wheel dump truck with equipment is $86,920. That's $86,920. Under attachment, equipment list under B, the equipment is $64,450, total price of And then there's an itemized list for a custom dump truck, 10 feet by, a DHD 106, and the total price of that is, for equipment, is $40,810, a total price of the vehicle of $127,730. And there's a cut sheet or an information sheet, I should say, that goes with it, and that winds up this bid. Is there any more? That's all three bids there. Going to board comment? Would you like to have Peter review these and get back to us?
Yeah, they're more good numbers.
For the next meeting?
Real good.
Okay. Would you make that happen, John?
Yes.
Thank you. That takes care of it. Now we come to the section of, oh, public comment. Public comment is limited to 15-minutes on one subject. We ask that the people that would like to make a presentation, that they do it for a period of three-minutes. Please understand we do that. Sir, please. Please state your name and your address when you're here. I appreciate it. It's kind of tough when we ask you to walk around.
Peter Royce, I live on Card Drive. I am, at least for the moment, the Chair of Budget Committee. And did they see the minutes of our meeting of 24th of September? Perhaps not.
I thought I pulled in.
But what we are hoping is that we would have a procedure similar to last year, where we see the budgets at the same time you do, and are asked to comment or ask questions as you do. I think that worked rather efficiently last year. I think it saved department heads a fair amount of time, where we didn't have to go and address questions to them after the fact. What we did last year, just to elaborate a bit, is when we developed questions and concerns, we sent them to John, who forwarded them to the board, and also sent them to the department. So, everyone knew where our issues were coming into the first presentation. And I think that really worked as well as anything we've ever tried, and I would like to have your support to continue that procedure.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Yes?
I really appreciate their effort last year. I would support it again this year.
Thank you. Just to let you know, that's, Peter, that's coming up, the discussion as to how the board would like to do that, whether it's going to give you first try or what, we'll discuss that later on the meeting. Thank you for bringing up. Appreciate your letter. Any other comments? Seeing none, I will close public comments. We have review of the minutes from October 1st, 2018. Comment from the board, please. There's no issues. May I have a motion for acceptance, please?
Motion to accept the minutes of October 1st as written.
I'd second that.
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Over the administrative report. First, Administrator Scruton.
First item, the Recreation Department wanted to know if the board still supported the Rec Department taking over the whole building if the library moves out. They want to vote on this as part of their record.
Board have any comments?
I think my position is the same. Should the library go off to build a new building, I don't see why I wouldn't support the Rec taking over the rest, taking over that building.
Is that a motion?
Does anybody else have any comments? I'll get the motion in a minute, please. Do we have any other comments?
I support what you're saying. Let me have the definition.
However, we have two supports. I also will support that, because I think it's just another way to go. It saves money for the taxpayers and everything else. Fantastic way. Appreciate the idea on that.
I would agree with the rest of the board.
All right, then. Mr. Air? All right, so if I may, may I have a motion, please?
So, I'll make a motion that the Selectmen, select people support the purpose of the Rec Department taking over the current library space, should the town citizens approve the raising of a new library.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Air. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, John.
Second question. I think there's some complexity that involves the buildings that I brought up between the Town Hall and the Police Station. And I was asking the board how they would like to proceed. When this question first arose, it was just related to a construction plan for the new Town Hall, but at this point, I think we need to look closely at what's going on in the Police Station as well, and I wanted some guidance from the board as to how they want to proceed.
So, it's my understanding we're talking about the 125 acres, which we're going to get five, I mean, on Route 125, we're going to get five acres of Police Station.
We actually have got to talk about everything related to the Police Station and the Town
Yes?
Chairperson Bailey, can I ask that we move to number three of the proposed revisions to the Deputy Town Administrator job description first?
We don't know. There was only two minor comments on the proposed draft that was, came out of the last meeting. One was change the Board of Selectmen to select persons, and the other was to correct a typo. So, is the board willing to approve the Deputy Town Administrator job description?
Is there any other comments for corrections on this, Deputy Town Administrators?
John did a very good job of taking what had originally been drafted by the Select Board and incorporating that with some of the original work that was done a year prior to that, and I felt very comfortable with what had been produced. If there were no other discussions, I would be ready to make a motion.
Please make your motion.
I would make a motion to accept the revised Deputy Town Administrator's job description.
I will second that.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unopposed? 5-0 on its own.
Okay. And I don't know if you want to circle back to the buildings later, if you want to do Water Committee next. Are we ready to try to give direction for a Water Committee, or is that something that you want to bring up at the next meeting?
Well, I have to tell the board members that I have been in contact with several people from the past, and nobody seems to have the necessary paperwork that was requested and we were looking for. So, I would just ask that we put this on for, say, about 30-days. The board give me 30-days on that?
Yeah, I think, Chairperson Bailey, we have one other committee that had been requested to be formed, and I think at that time, we did some research on like-sized communities and made the decision based on how other like-sized communities had proceeded. So, I would say if we do the research in like-sized communities and see if, in fact, they're using a Water Committee, and if they are with the mission, vision, and values of that committee might be, and review those.
Selectperson Haudigoff, I agree with you partially, but the part that's really detrimental to the fact is that we have control over considerable amount of potable water that the towns around us are really looking to tie into and to use. And I think that sometimes it goes outside of what this force could really do. And I think by having a Water Committee, it would give it the additional information that we need. I mean, that's the part that really scares me, is because some of our properties are owned by neighbor towns, and they've bought that property specifically. and they bought that property specifically for water use.
My assumption is there are some other water-rich communities in the state, and that we could potentially go to their town and city sites and see if, in fact, they have Water Committees, what their mission is of the committee, and make some decisions based on that. Am I incorrect in stating that, John?
I was just thinking, Auburn supplies the water to Manchester. I would think that would be a good, I have friends in the Administrator over there. I'll contact him.
I don't want you, Mr., Selectman Hatakar, I don't want you to misunderstand there. I'm not saying not to do it. I'm just saying that our situation here really warrants it because of what's going on right now with the city of Rochester.
Yeah.
Mr. Air, you had a question or statement?
Yeah, well, I think, I think, give you the time. Because one person may be interested, and you can find enough staff so we can perform. As volunteers, I'd come by this day and age.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, so then we'll put this off for 30 days and bring it back up. Thank you for your consideration.
We'll table it then, all right.
John?
The only other item I had is that I do, I did not come with a proposal on how to proceed with the building, because I think we need to have some discussion, because there's several, I mean, it's clear the library wants to go forward. So that one is not really part of this debate as much as, what is the Board going to do about Police Station and Town Hall? And I think that's a discussion that needs to be had by the Board as, and I'm not saying we have to reach a decision tonight, but at least what is going to be the decision-making process that the Board is going to develop, and the timeframe by which the Board wants to make decisions. You know, the clock is ticking.
Go ahead, Selectman Nepp.
I have some comments on it. In reading the Building and Life Safety Code review that was completed, there were some things that were a bit glaring and stuck out to me. When the Fire Department was built, it was never built as a dormitory. So the upsell, it is definitely a mandatory requirement for any building that is a dormitory to have a sprinkler system in it, but that was never built with that intention at that time, which is why it would have required a sprinkler even back when it was built, if it was built as a dormitory-style building. So the letter that we all received is a little misleading in the sense that it sells it as a dormitory, and that's not what it was built as. Also, it talks about the S1 issue being moderate hazard storage. I'd love to know what they're referencing in there, because with the exception of some diesel and probably a little gasoline that's stored in there, which are further accessory units, I don't think that would be enough to throw it into a category that requires that. And if so, we could very easily put a flammable storage unit in there that just holds it for a few thousand dollars. I know because I've done it in buildings. So those were the, kind of the two glaring items that stuck out to me there. I do think we have to look at, what is the solution to solve the Police Department need right away? And I know that pending some of these corrections, it might, it might be a fairly reasonable solution to get them their one-to-five-year plan that gives us a stopgap to build out a bigger plan, and really drive and sell that bigger plan to make sure that it is appropriately done, and we take care of the Police Department the way they should be taken care of. And then, as for the Town Hall, I've been through this pain a few times, so I'm like, yeah, we can see.
Other comments from the Board, please?
I had a question.
Selectman Hatakar?
The Building and Fire Safety Code review that was done, it was done by Paul Sanders?
No. He was just publishing it. He was the contact to whom they addressed it.
Right. Who was the engineer that did the study?
We noticed that she didn't sign her name. It was a woman that was working with JCM Code Specialist LLC. But I don't know if it was in the email, but she was not out of the attachment.
So we don't know her name?
I'm sure Paul does. I don't.
And can you share with the Board who the actual contact people were for this review in the town?
Paul Sanders.
He was all maintenance.
Paul, Paul was in charge of maintenance.
So he spoke to what was happening operationally in the Fire and Police Department?
I don't know who he used. In other words, he was the contact that was working with them, and how much he spoke with, in other words, I do not know the details of the JCM Code Specialist as to how they want, how she went about her work.
Might it be worth inviting her in here to explain it?
Somebody, I didn't understand it.
One more time, please. Mr. Nepp is speaking now. That's very quick. I couldn't believe it. Mr. Air?
I, I am confused about the one she already dated and brought stuff from, the scope of work. I like to hear a scope of work, how you identified everything.
Any other comments?
I think we could have been copied on the information.
I agree with you, Mrs. Nepp. If you look through this, there's nothing that talks about anybody else that's spoken to.
Absolutely nothing that I saw.
No. I think this board is on being a waste of money. Would you like to have her come here, or would you like to set up somebody else to come in, Mr. Air?
Well, if she'll sign it, and there's a scope of work, I'll give you all the determination.
Selectman Hatakar?
Well, can we have the code enforcement?
No, we're going to finish this up ourselves before we have outside comments, please.
So I'm perplexed at it, based on some of the information that had been reported out, whether the actual operations as they currently exist were reviewed, or whether projections were made for future operations at that facility.
Any other comments? Code Enforcement Officer, please.
My name's John Higgins. I was actually given this when I came into the meeting tonight. I never saw this before either. But if you go to the second page where it talks about, it says if a sprinkler system is needed, and then it goes on about how you got to look at the section, and then if it is needed, because it has more than 30 people and stuff, then it might be, but if the work that's being done doesn't exceed 50% of the total part of the building, then it's not required. And if you're going to add a fire-rated pump, which they don't have now, then it wouldn't be required. So basically, what this is saying is you don't need a sprinkler, not that you need one. And then the other portion, which is all being missed, was when they talk about it in the first paragraph, they said there's a fire separation between the Police Department and the Fire Department. So those are looked as two separate buildings. So if you look at just the Police Building as itself, all by itself, this whole thing, she says she needs more information. Because basically, she talked in circles and didn't tell you anything.
So we paid for this, and we have no determination for the engineers?
They say they need more facts in order to determine, so they weren't given enough facts to make a decision whether or not the sprinkler system is needed. They're basically saying we need more information. We don't know. That's what this report says.
Thank you, John. John, how much this costs us?
I don't know yet.
Can we?
I would ask that you hold the check or consider delaying somewhat so we can find out, we can get this report straightened out. Any other comments from the Board about spending money or getting this report straightened out?
I will say again, I think that the selectmen should be copied on this stuff.
Sooner than, sooner than the night of the meeting.
Right.
Well, I got it today. I mean, it arrived. I mean, that was, we've been trying to get this from them for several weeks, and it arrived today, so I immediately sent it to you.
Well, the first time I saw it was tonight.
That's what all of us.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it arrived today.
All of us have.
Sometime in the afternoon.
So what the building official is telling us is that it really doesn't tell us anything that what we need legally to work on. So we should turn around and maybe have some other individuals besides Mr. Sanders to accompany her on the next visit. Any other comments from the Board on that, please?
Given that there's no outcome or determination, I would certainly expect that we wouldn't pay the contract until we have one.
Thank you for your support. Thank you for your support. All right. John, should we move on?
Yep. Can I make a comment?
Certainly. Go ahead.
I'd like to comment on the Town Hall. Police we need to take care of. I support the library at Ram's L.A. I don't, the other law will support a Town Hall, and then it limited us to the police and the youths. Costs the site work up there to do both. It's going to be high. And I had to talk to him, he's given for us, we should take a serious look at it. On 125, it's with soils there, we're going to give a lot of money on the structure, the site work. And it gives us a possibility for expansion for the place, for the town, of the Police Department. Because the safety bill is limited there, too, and I feel Ram's L.A. is limited. So if you all take it serious, look at this.
Thank you. John, does it have any more of your report?
Nope, that's it.
Mrs. Nepp, your staff report, please.
The signatures, I have one intent to cut timber, two land use change tax warrants that totaled over $15,000. I have abatements '24, '25, '26, and I also have, I added three more this afternoon, '27, '28, and '29. The warrant that needs to be posted by the Town Clerk's Office for the general election. Payroll manifested October 4th, vendor manifested September 30th, and second half property tax warrant in the amount of $12,779,312. And do you want to talk about the de-graders?
I think that's going to be non-public because of the hatchet, I'm sure of it.
That's going to go into as a legal?
No, hatchet, reputation, because it's, it's on hatchet.
Take note of that. Any other comments on Mrs. Nepp's report from the Board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Go to old business. Oppose the addition to the Town Hall land to the Haley-Rubenstein County project?
There was no interest expressed in any of the abutters in the property.
Okay. Comes back to the Board, we want to allow that piece of property at their request to go into the conservation easement. What is your wish, please? What is your desire?
I love the opinion that it was completely landlocked anyway, and that we should include it as part of that parcel.
All right. Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to include it as part of the Haley-Rubenstein parcel.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second. I now support the Town Lands Committee for their work on it.
But that's not part of the motion, which I'm glad you seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Air?
I support the Town Lands Committee. It is volunteer, it would give us the best options for the town.
Thank you very much. All those? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
So what was the motion, Andy, to support?
The motion was to support putting the four-acre parcel that's landlocked in, included in with the Haley-Rubenstein property.
With the Board's permission, I would like to take the next old business, Water Committee mission statement out, and put it in with 30 days. Does anybody oppose that? Moving on to new business, new Town Hall. John, did you cover that enough for your needs?
I have nothing more to add at this point.
Does the Board have anything more to add?
I have two thoughts on this. One of them is that interest rates are going to rise in the next year. But my other thought is that we have no drawing, no, uh-huh.
Mr. Air, let her finish, please.
No current drawing for that five-acre parcel, and I think we have various stages of things right now. We're still exploring what needs to happen with the Police Station. We're exploring the idea of the Town Hall. I know the library has done all of their work. They have their architectural design. They've done their fund development from a foundational perspective to begin that build. I'm wondering if our procedure might be, as a Board, to accept the land and then push off presenting a Town Hall till the following year.
If, it's just not clear whether or not that would be acceptable to the owner, but we could pursue that question.
Does anyone else on the Board feel like that would give us enough time to, well, see how the residents of the town choose to proceed with the library, or choose not to proceed with the library, build, and give us enough time to have the land looked at, surveyed, develop a plan, and a cost for it?
I agree with you partially, but I think that maybe we should put some time together and take the plans that we've looked at before, so we can have an idea. And then also that we have Selectperson Nepp. He's been working diligently on getting us down below the 10,000 square feet, so it makes it equitable for us to use. You know, with his help, we've got down that way. So I think if we could put some time together, we could get at least a little ahead of the power curve, and then make a determination that way. That's just my suggestion. I'm not motioning anything.
So I took pictures of the plans as they existed, and they were one-story buildings. The majority of them are larger than what we currently discussed needing. So I'm assuming that another study, review, or plans would need to be done.
You're absolutely right. I can't, I can't, I can't argue. I'm just saying that if we looked at what we had, and we could just look at it, and then we would be ahead of the power curve, and it's exactly where we want to go. So, Mr. Air?
I support your review, but we can inform a building committee for the Town Hall owns up, and stop painting to architects for all this stuff, the designs and stuff. It's a waste of money and stuff, the schemes and stuff. We have enough information. We scale down, and then we look from people on the committee and us. We can go with a good solution, present, before we start spending, spilling this money out the window.
Yeah, we're not, we're not just advertising, we're not talking about spending, we're just putting ourselves together. Mr. Nepp, you have some comments?
Well, I got a bunch of comments, but I'll try and limit them. I don't, there's a lot we're doing from a technology end that will help us better manage and better control our space utilization. We, I don't know if we're ready to move forward with the moron, although I have felt the pain of that for multiple years. And even when looking at putting a proposal out there that actually could have been funded using complete fund balance, and wouldn't have created any additional tax impact, it got hoodwinked at town meeting. So I don't want to go down that road again, because I have a feeling it would be a repeat of the last experience, and I don't think it would be value-added. I'd much rather put the effort into getting it right, getting it costed out appropriately, figuring out what we want to do, and then putting it forward there. I truly believe that we can do this for probably a million and a half, maybe less.
I'm not here to argue dollars, because I haven't seen a plan, so what are the construction costs?
I'm just saying if you start.
That would be nice.
If you start looking at, if you look at about 150 bucks a square foot, and you're talking under 10,000, and you're using 10,000 square feet as your rough number, there's your 1.5, though.
Appreciate it.
So it can, and there's some really great building techniques out there right now that are starting to make cost utilization and insulation and energy efficiency really worthwhile. So it's just a matter of, if you look at it in a way that actually makes good sense. You know, we're not piling dormers on and things like that that add cost, and don't, but don't add any significant value to the building.
So what we've come up with it is everybody has agreed, or I want to make sure everybody is in agreement, that we need to have a building that's at or below 10,000, not to exceed 10,000 square feet. You want to turn around and put more thought into it, and not put a warrant on the glove in this upcoming March election. Is that the consensus of the Board?
That, and I'd like to approach the landowners to be sure that they would still keep the opportunity available to the town in that case.
Tremendous idea. Tremendous idea. Chris, Mr. Nat.
I was going to say, my suggestion would be, there might be a warrant article, but it would be a warrant article that is tied solely to the purpose of taking the land and setting a development plan with like a window to build. And I think Milton went through the same thing, where they had five years or seven years to build a new fire department on the parcel of land that they were, I don't know if it was gifted to them, or if they were able to purchase it, or whatever it was, but they had a seven-year option. It happened on the very last year that that option was available, so.
So you'd like to have John turn around and when he speaks to the property owner who wants to donate to us, add that caveat to it?
I just look at, that may be a way to secure the land and prep and have a plan around doing it that also aligns with a vision forward for the town.
So if, if John were to call and get that put in there, Mr. Nat, then that way that we would know whether or not to put the warrant article up. Is that what you're saying? Go for warrant article, just for property alone?
Does, how does the-
That's what you're saying?
In a roundabout way, yes.
Tracy?
I would like to ask John if he sees any barriers to that. In, in the discussion with the landowners, I, I think they basically said, you know, they wouldn't want us to sit on it for more than, and I think he threw five years out there, if I recall correctly. So we would have to have in place our plans going into this.
I think it's premature to say no warrant article, you've got 90 days. I think to indicate that you recognize you're not ready to go forward with the building does not mean, in 2019, does not mean you're not going to do something with a warrant article. I think that you have to be careful that you don't close off reliable options. And I think having a discussion with him should occur before you make any final decision as far as even whether or not you're going to try for a building on the town. I mean, you don't need to make that decision tonight.
Right.
You just need to come up with a plan. I think the plan is, we'll talk to him, see if we can delay. The other thing I think we should approach him with is where he's looking for an anchor with a police station work there. In other words, if we built a new police station at that location and we went in with a police station plan design bill, would that be something that we could proceed with? Because I think that what I'm hearing is the police station is the highest priority for the board.
I don't know, well, sorry, Tracy, you had your argument first.
Safety is always a priority, and I think that when we, when we talk about being sure we're looking at the best interest of the town, safety's the utmost importance. I, I think if the opportunity is available, John, to continue to have a discussion with these landowners that from, I agree with you, let's not cut off the idea or say definitively there would be no warrant. But I, I do think we're not ready, and I'm not sure in 90 days we'll be ready, but we are not ready to present this. And when we are ready to present this, I would like it to go through. So, I personally, as a taxpayer, not speaking as a select board member, would like to know that we're paying towards something that is developing some equity and, as opposed to continuing to pay rent and losing out on potential tax dollars.
Ms. Hidgoff, thank you very much for this. It was great. Dan?
I would support a warrant article to get into agreement, maybe propose a building, but, and set money aside. Because I don't believe we, we can set money aside, everyone's idea is get under 10,000 square feet, get a reasonable building, and then we don't have to go forward with huge bond. We have actually doing a fund balance every year, we set aside a little bit. With the committee needs review, and so, form a building committee for the town hall, and look at the needs for the town hall and the police station, and see what will benefit the town the most. We should not give up this opportunity.
Any comments from Mr. Ayer's comments?
I don't think addressing the landowners is giving up the opportunity. I think we need to have an open discussion with them.
Exactly. Any other, any other discussion on this? Saying that, I'll move on. Thank you, everybody, for participating. Next, the next piece of fire. Sorry.
I just wanted to be sure that this included meeting with them and discussing with them.
It was my, it was my idea, the way everybody's talking, and John is going to turn around and have a conversation with the landowners, as requested by Selectman Hidgoff and Mr. Ayer, Mr. Nat, and yourselves. So it's everybody's agreement. Thank you.
George?
What?
Would we approach?
Public comment. No comments from the public?
No, I was going to ask whether or not that public comment could be inserted in this, in this moment, because it's relevant to this discussion.
No, we would move on. Thank you. The next one is a request from the select board. If anybody here has a request for a warrant article that you would like to see, would you please contact John and let John know that you'd like to have a warrant article? And we'd put it to some of the information together, and then when we all sat down, we would have our warrant articles and things that we would like to have done, put forward on that. Is that acceptable to the board? Do you want to do that? Thank you very much. John, you have the next one is the budgets?
Yes. If we can open your books to the budget pages, and we will be looking at the section that starts off, the budget pages and the executive budget, will look like that up there. The first page is of the schedules and the time, and right after that, you get to that spreadsheet that is the, the headings don't quite line up right, we're trying to get that corrected. This is the new program, first year, and we've used it. In fact, I'm just meaning Thursday to fix this, but the 2019 draft is the first column of numbers, the 2018 budget is the second column, and the third column that shows on the screen up there is the difference from 18 to 19. That's what's showing there on the executive. As I mentioned in summary at the beginning, the biggest change in executive has to do with what's going on with some of these lines. This line right here, which, I'm going to look at that. Is, the first line, at George's request, I have put in for the selectmen to receive a salary, basically, a salary, a stipend, basically $100 a month per select person starting midway through, and that's the 4,500. The second line is, the way in which they're calculating, these are the benefits that actually go for the town administrator. There'd be some social security in here on the selectmen, but most of this is the benefit line for the administrator and the deputy town administrator.
What's the line now? What's the line?
The second line down there, $39,286.
4290?
Yes. I'll have to move it a little to see that.
That's okay.
And the, and then, and then the, the fifth line down, executive salary. Right now, we are both hourly, and I anticipate that when this goes to full-time town administrator after I retire, it would be a salary position. So that's why that salary line pops up at 40,000 for seven months of the year. The town administrator, full-time hourly is for the part year that I, is the part year that Connor is the deputy. The part-time hourly on the next line is for when I am here before I retire. And those lines together, as I, as I indicated, the cost of the succession management for us to go this route. And that's about the only change that's occurring on the executive budget.
Go ahead, please.
My one quick question was, John, you indicated that if we needed you on a per diem basis following your retirement, that you would be available. Have you built any-
Yeah, there's a little bit in there for that.
Okay.
Not a lot, but I would anticipate coming back and, yes, there was something in there for that.
Thank you.
As needed.
John, it wouldn't bother me if you just wanted to volunteer. I'm sorry, Dan. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
To get back to the five-member board, I don't remember if consensus will get paid. I don't want to get paid.
This, this is just him running through, at least they are going to go back.
We're going to have discussion later on.
Yeah, but how can you, one person can put something in the budget.
I can put something, I put a lot of things in this budget, Dan.
You just said that George requested.
Yeah, George requested it, and I agreed to it.
Nothing's hidden. This is the time to discuss that. Anyway, go ahead.
Let's go through the entire presentation.
Okay. Make a note that that's something you want to address when it comes to discussion. Right now, it's just presentation.
You know, we're going to know.
Yeah? And, and, and most of the rest of these lines, they're just minor changes. I left 65,000 in for continued. If we go down to the next page, financial administration, the, there's, the biggest change here I mentioned was in that contract line, where it went from 39 to 58, which is an $18,000 increase, which is the Office 365 licenses. And that's basically the, the biggest change that has occurred in financial administration. I mentioned earlier that this assessing contract next to bottom line on the screen there at 35 should actually be 45, but then later on, there's another line that will drop back 5,000. I will plan to make that adjustment the next time I go through, because that's what the contract is for, is 45. Some of these, we're still gathering information, we didn't have it all when we put this together. As we get information, I'll bring to your attention what is changing. So I didn't know if there were any questions on financial administration.
I think 4,500, though.
John, do we save anything as far as we might be paying for carbonite or some backup program right now, off-site storage of all of our data and information?
No, not, not, we're not paying enough outside to, to make much savings as far as that goes. Most of it, we're, we're really backing up everything inside, there's very little backed up in the cloud.
Okay.
What's really what you're going to see here is our initial get-this-right cost is going to go up, but our cost afterward is going to go right down.
Okay.
And, and where you may see the savings eventually, not this year, but next year, for that 18,000 will be the phone line, which is in government buildings. Because this Office 365 can help us replace the phone system that we're currently, we have to purchase the phones, but after one year, then we start having savings in the government building line. So that's not something you see here.
Are we voice-over internet now?
Yes.
For phone?
Yeah.
I didn't think we were voice-over at this time. I thought we were moving to-
Well, I'm pretty sure we go out over T1 line.
I thought we had Bay Ring or something.
Yeah, we do. We have First Light, it's called now, it took Bay Ring's place.
Okay.
I just didn't know if it was, it may be.
I don't know technically on this, there are, people on that committee know far more than I do on this. I just know, I pick it up, I get a dial tone, I dial it. Okay. Moving, moving on, I do have money in here for the treasurer, the deputy treasurer. There's $1 left in for budget committee, but really, that's just in case something happened, it's really not been a need over the la, over the last several years. As you can see, zero's been regularly ending up there. The revow contract, this line at 59 is going to end up at 54. Legal, I cut, I mean, legal I left the same, but if you look at legal, I got to move this sideways here, you're making out pretty good so far this year. We've, we've spent 27,000 and we're two-thirds of the way through the year. So 50 is a conservative number, but I don't have much doubt. Some years, we've gone far higher than that, some years lower, that's one of the lines that's somewhat harder to predict what's going on. The next group on payroll administration are all pretty much just placeholders. We have been putting 15,000 in for end of service, and this was especially related to sick bank buyout. We've only got, I think, two, one left in sick bank at this point. There will be some who leave that have earned time substantially accrued, but the biggest risk we were running was back when we had earned time and sick bank together. So those are looking good. We skip land use and we go to government buildings. And when we get to government buildings, you notice the fifth, the fifth line down, the building maintenance line went from 14,000 to 100,000. This is where the 85,000 goes in for the air handler system and the air conditioning units, to, to replace those for the building.
Which building?
Public safety building. Those are 18 years old and reaching end of life, which then have trouble, and they told us we're going to have trouble with patents on one of them.
Yeah, I'd love to see the actual report on that.
Yep. I can get that. Make a note to get that information.
John, that's offset by a grant, correct?
No, that's a different air handling system.
That's at the fire station. Okay.
There are two air handling systems. One is the breathable air, and that's what we're talking about here. The other is the exhaust from the vehicles where you've basically put hoses on the exhaust so that the exhaust from the diesel goes outside of the building. And that's the one you get the grant for.
Okay.
If you drive out of the building and tear it red off, it's tons of fun.
Yeah. You've got to be careful you're not around when those hoses snap back. Yeah. And I basically left everything else pretty much unchanged for electric fuel vehicle. Fuel is very much dependent upon what kind of winter we have. Those numbers, we're all doing pretty well on those numbers. I think when we get to December, we may want to revisit, because we'll have better actuals for that time as to how well we're doing. Right now, heating fuel is, is going to go over, but it looks like we, you know, we'll, we'll come in with an adjustment as to what needs to be done at that point. It's really going to be, be driven by, by the actuals. Dan?
I'm also, they're probing that one thing.
Yes. This is why we call it heating fuels rather than oil. But if you look, we've already spent, we still get some cold months coming, and we've, last year, we spent 24,000. This year, we're at 25,000 budgeted, so, and, I'm sorry, year-to-date, we're 24,000. Last year, we expended 22,000. So we're definitely going to overspend that line this year. I don't know by how much, but we may need to put five or 10 into that based upon actual experience when we get to the end of the year. But for right now, I put the placeholder in at the same unchanged number. The problem when you stat budgets in July, you've got six months of expenditure still left, and, and you have to look at what the actual is. So that line, if, of the government building line, the discretionary line is the 85,000 for the equipment. The line that I think we're going to have trouble with is the heating fuel line. We may have to increase. Insurance, we're actually saving some money on this. We went out to bid, Primex is the one that has received the bid. Incidentally, they've just offered to put me back on the board next year, so I plan to go back on the Primex board. It's a nonprofit, for the sake of the communities, you have to be a member of a community to be on there. I'm there as a representative for Barrington. But Primex won the bid, and they're doing a great job for us, and they've reduced the rate.
How does that work for you next year as you transition into retirement?
Because I'm on, I'm a member of a board in town of Farmington, I'm able to stay on. That one I am doing for now.
I'm just going to make it two.
The stratified regional planning I just got to do is, this is under my $95, but I'm not going to try to change it. The, the increase was a little bit more than I projected, and it came in at 83.95. And then if we go down to the next line that I wanted to look at today is quite a ways further on, it's on page-
Trouble is, put the whole on the page.
Oh, it's way down on health. If you've got to go to-
I get it. I just had it.
4419, the, the, 014419, that'll give you what page you're on for health department. What this is, is the rural district health numbers. You will notice it's up $1,000. Basically, we have been giving $1,000 to an agent- Basically, we have been giving a thousand dollars to an agency for sexual assault services that has been asking for two thousand. So this year I put the two thousand in that they requested. And that's why that one is up. Last year it was up because you added Meals on Wheels. And in your packet, there is a list of the agencies we helped with the dollar amount. I can get to that in a minute if you want to look at it. General Assistance is a place where we expect to save substantial amount of money this year and I've reduced the budget as a result. If you look at the General Assistance Shelter, it's the top of the next page. Forty-eight thirty-five, no, not shelters. That's the one where we get to homeless shelters. The next one, General Assistance Food and Rental. I have budgeted forty. Last year we had sixty. So far this year, we've only spent fourteen thousand eight hundred. Last year we spent about forty, so I didn't dare go in below what we spent last year, but I don't see that we're going to get even close to the sixty. And that's the one for shelter and shelter and rental. So that's a, that's a big drop. In fact, actually, I don't think that made my slide on decreases. But there was a decrease there in general assistance. And then the last ones that I do, Patriotic Purposes is a dollar. Long-term bond is a dollar. Just on cans is a dollar. And that brings you down to the total operating budget, the numbers that I gave you earlier. Seven million one sixty-seven two forty-seven from seven million fifty-two two twenty-eight, which is a hundred and fifteen oh nine. Yes, Tracy?
Did you fill anything into the budget for preparation for the twenty-twenty-two celebration at some point? I'm, I'm sure the committee's going to need.
That's what that five thousand is for. It's in the wrong line.
Okay, so.
That's, that's, that's where it is.
Okay. So our tricentennial.
A tricentennial, yeah. If we go down to, I think it's the last warrant article. Maybe just mislabeled. Yeah, it's labeled Winter Road Emergency for five thousand. That's supposed to be the tricentennial for five thousand.
Thank you.
That's where we're at.
We won't break snow, you celebrate turning three hundred. It's the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that, that's, I was wondering where that five came from. It didn't make any sense, but.
At least it's in the budget, which is good.
It's in the budget, just not in the right line. I got to get a tricentennial line. Any, any other questions on the budgets that I went over or the? The only question I have is the air handler, more information on that. But if you have other questions, George, I don't know if the ABC has questions, but I think that's my presentation.
Peter?
I think we want to meet and focus on what we've got so far.
Thank you very much. Peter has said he wants to meet first and then get back to us.
So.
Is there any other questions from the board? Seeing that, we'll move on to Selectors Report. Mr. Air?
I didn't make the conservation last week.
Sad across?
The Recreation is hosting Tricat Truck and Kids Chaos on the twentieth of October. Details on their Facebook page.
Selectors in action?
We have nothing to disappoint.
Selectors in there?
All right, so Planning Board had a meeting. Part of the Planning Board discussion was around, there was a request for continuance, which was pushed off to the first meeting of February, so February fifth. Excuse me. Which is the town of Barrington and Liberty International.
February?
February, February sixth. That was through Jones Beach. The Barrington Waterways Committee presented their note to the board and I think that was pretty much it for the Planning Board. We started to talk about looking at some requests for funds for the next chapter, which was the government buildings, I believe.
We're going to be looking for volunteers for facilities and utilities. We've got the funding. SRPC should be putting something in the newspaper for us, do like a press release.
So a request for.
Describe them.
For, for facilities and buildings, so looking at the infrastructure of the town and how that all builds out. Is that appropriately to say it, Marsha?
Are you talking about energy usage within the facilities, just so I'm understanding what's happening here?
Marsha, yes, this town theater. No, the Facilities and Utilities chapter will cover a lot of things from buildings to possible exploration of water, sewer, all kinds of things, depending on where the committee wants to go. The, we've signed a contract with Stratford Regional Planning Commission to facilitate and we'll be looking for volunteers from the community to serve on a Planning Board Subcommittee on this chapter, which is we did for like the Economic Development Chapter. So they're going to put together a little press release and request for volunteers to involve members of the community.
Can you give an example of who a good subject expert would be for that committee? I'm thinking a civil engineer.
Sure, civil engineer, somebody, yeah, who's been involved in building construction.
Architect?
An architect. Everyday, you know, contractor, somebody who has experience with municipal systems, whether it be, you know, water or sewer or any of those types of things. We're trying to look, you know, a community of nine thousand people and trying to look forward, you know, to the next decade and what may be coming up, maybe even the next twenty years as we grow. I know Select Board Chair has talked a lot about the Water Committee. I think that's really important as a community that doesn't have a municipal water supply, that the town look at into the future where, where there might, there may be a need.
So we had a Technology Committee meeting last Thursday, which I know John forwarded the minutes to the committee. I would like to make a request that the details of the Technology Committee report are sealed at this point because of the report itself and the fact that it could negatively impact our town infrastructure, being it points out where our faults and failures are as a system. I request that this be.
What we should do is going to non-publish, release it in there and seal it there.
Okay, I'm just saying, I don't want to share any of that information here, but it give us a lot of insight through it. It has, we have a lot to work through. It pointed out a lot of areas for us to improve and really where our improvement needs to happen. Also.
What was that called, details of?
This is the detailed network assessment.
Okay, that's going to non-publish that.
I'm just, so the police department was able to upgrade their Verizon extender for their phones and their air cards and there was no additional cost on that. So that was a, a big plus for us. We've been rolling out Office 365 licenses, so that is moving right along. We started with the G5 licenses, which are the most secure and have the, have the ability to be upgraded for phone service as well. And not everybody will end up with a G5 license. There will be some G1 and possibly some G3 licenses along the way. Phones are going to be a second phase on this. This will be next year's piece before we renew that, the phone contract. So we want to get that solved before that point. Scanners, so one of the pieces that was being looked at is we get a lot of documents and we have a lot of historical documents in both the town planner and also the code enforcement officer felt it would be very useful for the town to have a scanner for us to scan documents. And I completely agree with it because I'm looking at purchasing one for my place of employment as well. And it creates a good opportunity for us to scan old files, back files, start minimizing some of the paper because God forbid if anything happened, get the town hall order, storage unit, proof it's online. So this creates some protection and redundancy in what we're doing. The total cost impact on that was under fifteen thousand dollars, depending on which unit we chose. I believe the unit we were looking at was right around ten thousand. We compared to the state bid as well and the state bid ended up being substantially more expensive than that was the, like the fifteen thousand dollar unit versus going with the ten thousand dollar unit that we were looking at.
What, what unit, is that a unit to the improvements or is that a?
Yep, same thing. It will do, it will do large flat files. You'll be able to scan blueprint prints. You'll be able to scan any land use documents, anything of that sort. So I would like to make a motion that the board allows us to spend up to fifteen thousand dollars for the purchase of a flat file scanner. If we can to find it in this year's budget, preferably, and if not, to budget for it for next year.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a second, Mr. Air, for the discussion. My, my discussion is that what's it going to cost for employees to do that? Or can we use our existing employees to do that?
Our existing? We would use our existing.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Further discussion? All, the favorites say aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Who seconded that?
Dan did.
And aye, aye, all five.
I really like that tech committee. Thank you. Yes, I do. I would like to just recognize the tech committee. They've done an enormous amount of work between that, looking at all the equipment that we need and then looking at the services that we should have and recognizing the need for a good assessment as well as reviewing the contractors so that we have a really great contractor in place doing this assessment for us to figure out where the town's gaps and holes and areas of improvement are. I just wanted to recognize that committee, they have done an outstanding job. So Bob Williams, Dave Holback, John, Will Lenhart, and Connor is the more recent addition. So thank you to all of them because they all dedicate a pretty significant amount of time to read through the stacks and stacks of paper and electronic documents that we get, so. I second that, thank you.
Selectors in there, thank you very much. I have no report because I was away. Moving on, next item is public comments. We have public comments. If public comments, please come to the podium, give your name and your address, please.
Marie Harris, thirty-one Lois Lane. Thank you very much to the Select Board to, to take the time to hear our, our comments. And I will confine myself to three minutes. We've always supported the concept of a town, of a town hall. In fact, many of us worked publicly for the passage of the warrant articles each time they came up, despite the fact that we did prefer a more holistic approach. And we still feel that the town offices would fit well into a campus concept up on Ramsdale Lane that would include a library, community center, rec department and its related activities, the ECLC, and shared facilities, community meeting spaces, large and small, and other kinds of, of shared infrastructure. So that, that, that was always our vision. However, it's not our place to weigh in particularly heavily on where the town hall ends up, just that we do support the notion of having one. Just to give you just a little bit of background on what has happened in the last three years since the land on Ramsdale Lane was, was approved, well, two thousand sixteen, the land was approved for development for a library and community center. At that time, we formed a 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity, the Barrington Library Foundation, so we could accept private funds to help offset the eventual cost of a bond. And to date, we have received four hundred and ten thousand dollars of private monies, a sum never before raised in Barrington. And I think that it's incredibly significant to note that this, what this represents in terms of, of town support for this concept of a library, community center. This money has come in the form of donations and pledges from individuals, businesses, and grant-giving organizations. We think this represents an exceptionally strong signal of approval on the part of Barrington citizens for this project. We've tried to be as inclusive and forward-thinking as possible with this project. We've worked closely with the architect to ensure that the building site has a well and septic system that is adequate to serve an additional building in the future if needed. We've looked at the siding of a new library to keep room for an adjacent building while preserving all the rec department's field space. It turns out, the rec department won't be needing storage space, which is something that we had planned for. And so we're able to, we're going to be redesigning the building to eliminate the ground floor, saving significant amounts of money on the final building. We've expended a significant amount of time and money working with a professional library consultant to plan our approach to the library project. We've cultivated support and goodwill, one group at a time, in living rooms and meeting rooms, with illustrated presentations and detailed Q and As. We've developed informational materials. We've partnered with local businesses to create promotional offers. Irving is offering a hundred dollar gas card to, oh, I'm getting close, am I? Is that your stopwatch?
You have extra, extra.
Oh, my heavens. Okay, so finally, the, the most important thing I'm up here to say is it is our concern that if a second bond appears on the warrant this year, two thousand nineteen, it, it has the potential for really jeopardizing this project because I think that the townspeople will see this as an either-or situation. And I would hate that a project like this, which has been so many years in the planning and so carefully thought out, to be jeopardized at this, at this stage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marie. Mr. Chairman? Is there anybody else that's public comment?
Hi there, Tracy Bissin, Hall Road. So I want to recognize the discussion that you had in regards to taking a more thoughtful look at the planning of where this space is and all that needs to be done. I really, I think that's a great consideration on your part. Having a new town hall is very important to the town and I think taking the time, because it's been turned down three times, taking the time to really communicate with the community about what is needed is going to be very important. And I know you'll be looking at some key things, but just to get it on record with this undeveloped land that you're looking at on one twenty-five, but, you know, what will be required to clear this land? Will there be stuffing, rubbing, geotechnical exploration, a well and septic system, driveway parking? And again, looking at the space that is potentially on the campus concept that we've been discussing with the library. Some of this has already been done, so just to get that on record. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Hello, I'm Kim Nichols. I live at thirteen forty-four Franklin Pierce Highway. Thank you for the job you're doing. Appreciate everything and the volunteering that you're doing at the table tonight. So I've done my share of volunteering as well and I've done a lot of presentations on behalf of the library. And I wanted you to know what I'm hearing as a resident, as a sharer of information about the concepts and the plans and the site plans. The number one question I get is where is the library going to be? That's what people want to know. The second question that usually follows is, well, what about the town hall? So people are thinking about the town hall. It's very important to them and they want answers. They want to know, they want to know what your plans are. So we've really tried to be very open and transparent about that space being available should you guys decide to do that, that there would be shared infrastructure, that it would be a smart plan for town taxpayers and residents. So I really just wanted to share that information with you that the town campus concept has a lot of positive connotations to it, to the hundreds of people I've spoken to over the last year doing those presentations. And again, I think that the shared infrastructure, the lower taxes in that sense, is appealing to taxpayers, because 2019 is going to be a very expensive year, $9 million, if you look at that presentation. And if you were to spread that out over time, I think you might win friends and influence people, as Dale Carnegie would say. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Air? All this talk about the campus, we asked for an alteration of land permit from the state. John, do you have a look into it? Does it support both buildings?
Yes, it does. We didn't need an alteration of land.
No, we asked, John, we asked you to look into that, if it was for both buildings, alteration of terrain permit.
We didn't need one. I didn't think you needed one because so much of it was already disturbed.
No, but the state, yeah, but with the state, you're going to look at this, the load on that law is subject to change. We don't have the state permits yet for all this, and we have a conceptual, yeah, it'll work. God love the engineers and architects, but when the state looks at it, they think the load and stuff, all, everything, add it all in, we pause it, the campus will work. I have to...
You never pause this of anything.
I have to, it's a contractor.
Mr. Air, when this project goes through, the architect and everyone else is going to have to have all that information ahead of us. Right now, we're in a conceptual plan.
That's right.
I think they deserve a chance to finish.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is public comment, this is their 15 minutes that the Board of Selectmen is eating into. We should let them finish their 15 minutes and not use it for Selectmen's discussion until the public comment is done.
Yes.
Thank you. Sam New Bodak, 34 Stanley Lane. Thank you, John, and thank the board. First of all, I'd like to note, it's been a few meetings since I've been here, and I appreciate the cohesiveness of this board. A number of five little votes, it's great, speaks to you all as a team. Just to echo what some of my fellow citizens have been saying, obviously, we appreciate the interesting situation that you all are being placed in, having this offer of land, which is a great offer, and having to make a quick decision on it. The thing that concerns me is the time with which you can work. I know that there are plans that have been made in the past for a town hall. I think it's just a tight timeline. Obviously, I want to support what's best for the town in the long run. Got a lot of family here, so, yeah, that's just my consideration, just when you're thinking through all this, the time to work through all the plans before March, and also the time to get them out to the public is a concern for me. Thank you.
Daniel Ayer, 334 Hall Concord Turnpike. As a parent and taxpayer, I work hard for my money. A lot of people do, they have fixed budgets. You take it last minute, you'll drop a survey of these professional engineers and stuff. Engineers we're paying big money for designing, young, over, it fails, last minute. Now you wait, last minute, the library, we've been working hard all these years, and we need a town hall, we have the police. Now, last minute, are we going to get information saying that that law will not support it? As a contractor, I'm not engineer, I'm not licensing, but I have common sense. You're asking a lot, how the law, well, the state, well, the new drainage rules and stuff, you're asking a lot. Will we get it? I don't know. That's why you should be looking for, you're not making promises. Really, professional engineers and designers, young road, why's it failing, the drainage?
Rebecca Butcher, New Billy Road. Thanks, Mr. Air. That's a really good point, because I think what you're speaking to is the fact that without all the facts and without all the information, it's really hard for townspeople to make these choices when they're faced with the warrant articles or bonds, or both in front of them. And you're speaking to a lot of possible things, both with the land used for town hall where the library is planned for, as well as the land on 125 that hasn't really been fully explored. And one of the things that we've learned in all of our public outreach opportunities with the library campaign over the last couple of years is that people really ask a lot of questions. They have asked us a lot to give them the facts on how much things are going to cost, exactly how big is it, where is this going to be, how is this going to work, what are the shortcomings of the current building that are making this be necessary? They're going to ask the same of you with the town hall. They're going to want to know why $64,000 in rent, times 23 years, same amount as 1.5 million, why not just keep paying that for 23 years? Or 31 years if we want a $2 million bond? They're going to want to know that before going in. So I guess our point here too is to say, if we're giving the voters multiple building plans on warrant articles or bonds all in the same year, they're going to have to choose. And we would like to say, let's give them all the information to choose from, or not maybe face them with all those decisions. We're concerned that we're going to have $500,000 on the table for the library, and it's going to be in limbo if we don't reach the 60% threshold of votes, because there's too many choices before voters in March. So we ask you to really strongly think about, is it your turn, given that you might not have all of the facts that the people are going to want to know? Otherwise, they'll have a lot of faulty assumptions, and then that might derail you the following year. That's maybe what's happened in the last three rounds, is that they haven't had all the facts. Thank you.
Rebecca, thank you very much for your comments. Please note, there's four minutes left in the discussion of the library.
Perfect.
You may have three left.
Okay, great. I'm Wendy Mazyars, and I live over on Gracie Way. I also have the privilege of being a chair of the library trustees. In years past, you've all asked us to wait on going forward with the warrant article to bond for our new library and a community center. And we waited. Now we're just asking you to wait. We did, and we've been hugely successful, as everyone has stated, that wait time, though frustrating, we have really got our ducks in a row, and are at a place where we feel that we can answer those really tough questions that people have asked in the past. I believe that you all can be just as successful as we are being, and to echo the previous comments, it does take that time. The people in Barrington are super excited about our project. It will drastically improve the aspects of our community. I want to say thank you to Select Persons, Hard Cop, and Nap for your thoughts about the warrant article may not be the best plan this March with such a short timeframe. And I would like to, I would support the thought that the library trustees and the foundation can continue going forward with our already projected plan. And lastly, just to let you all know, that on October 20th, we have an informational presentation with the S&amp;P Architecture, who will be showing all the community members that are present answering questions, that new proposed design that we've come up with. We've gotten a lot further in depth with being able to answer those questions. So we invite you all to come to that and be present and part of the process. Thank you for the time.
Before you leave, tell us the time, please.
Great. 10:00 AM at Barrington Middle School, 10:00 to 12:30, I believe it is slot out for.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of the library? We have two minutes left on this.
For any other matters?
No, no, I was just saying, hang on a minute, just hang on a minute. Is there any other public comments? Seeing that, I'll close the public comment. Thank you for your help.
You needed it.
I did, I really did. I would like a motion to go into non-public personnel, reputation, and legal.
Terrorism.
Terrorism too?
Well, I would make that motion.
Second.
Thank you all.
Go, go, vote please.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye. Aye, aye. I'm going to go to a public, take a ten minute recess.